Hello and welcome. You're viewing the Citizens Journalist Podcast Mesa County Compass that brings you the news that you can use from a different point of view. I'm Ruth.
I'm Lisa.
And together we are Mesa County Compass. Our goal is to create an informed, current, active citizenry armed with facts. We will be covering what's new, what's new to you, what it means to you, what you can do about it, and provide you access to the decision makers when we can. Ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Mesa County Compass. Today, we are going to do an interview with Jessica Hearn, who is running for District 51 School Board. We're happy to have you here, Jessica, and we would like to begin by you giving us a little something about yourself, if you would, please.
Sure, yeah, that's everyone's favorite question. Since I'm a little new to the Valley, I bought a house last September. So to run for school district, you just have to be here for 12 months in that subdistrict. But it was always my intention to move down here. And to do that, I've been on the Western Slope for nine years. I moved here from the Space Coast, where my dad worked on the space shuttle, but we always grew up as Denver Broncos fans, even though we had three other NFL teams in Florida, because he loved Colorado. So as soon as I was an adult and graduated from college and I was able to move out here, I did. And Rangeley was where I landed for a little while and taught at the community college up there. I still adjunct, I said no to classes this year just because the campaign takes so much more time than I even could have imagined that it takes. But my masters, one of my masters is in educational leadership. And I just really did that because I loved education. I knew I wanted to teach. I was teaching at the time that I did that. But I really felt that I was going to get burnt out, because most teachers do. And I wanted to set myself up for being a dean or a provost or a district director someday. And so here we are to that day.
Very good.
Okay, and then I noticed that when you came to the Valley, you immediately jumped in. Because at a forum you were at with Stand for the Constitution the other night, you said, "I'm on the city planning board for Fruta." And so you obviously want to have community involvement. So what made you decide that you wanted to do both that? And why do you think that and the school board are so important?
Great questions. So when I was choosing where to buy a house, because that's such a huge thing. It's probably the most, it actually is the most informed decision I've ever made. I spent months reading multiple cities' community development plans, watching a lot of stuff. I mean, living in Rangeley, you come down to the Grand Valley a lot, so I already knew about the folks down here and had a lot of friends. But the Fruta in Motion Community Development Plan is by far the most cool development plan I've ever read for just how they want to take that city forward and deal with, you know, expanding growth of persons living in a small community, but then how to manage all of that. And that's what makes me excited to be on the Planning Commission, because these are things like people's livelihood of like, "Hey, I want to have a dog boarding facility, but it's unconditional use. And I think I can meet these criteria." And you can negotiate with those persons to have what could be seen as a noisy kind of business you don't want to have in your neighborhood. And so like, just all those kinds of things that you get to have your hands in. Like, we have 175-unit apartment dwellings that are going to come up. And to just really be involved in the community for how it's going to grow is super cool to me. And in my day job, I read a lot of construction documents. Like, I read about sewer lines and water lines and all these things I never thought I would do from when I went to college to be a mathematician. But I think that's really important, and I want to do it concurrently with the school board. So I double-checked with the city that that wouldn't be a conflict or anything. And for school board, I mean, my passion since I was seven was to be a teacher. Went through some tumultuous times because I wanted to be a math teacher, but I actually failed a lot of math classes. Even in college, I failed calculus. But I figured it out. I did teach calculus later.
That's where we learn and teach.
Yeah, or it's, yeah, and just to have the empathy for the students. Because like, "Oh, I remember when I would make that mistake," right? So anyway. And the school board to me is important just because I can use that knowledge base. And then being a mathematician, like nitty-gritty spreadsheets of a budget, you know, like, that doesn't terrify me, that actually excites me. And I think it's just critical.
I don't think it terrifies the rest of us, it forces.
That's fair. But I like that you noticed I jumped right in. That actually wasn't my intention. Like, I moved here with the intention to be, hopefully, on those kinds of boards and commissions. But I was like, "Oh, I'll kind of wait a little while. I'll let people get to know who I am." And the Planning Commission had some vacancies from someone resigning. And I was like, "Well, I guess now's the time. We'll see if I get it." And I got appointed. And then as far as school board goes, Doug Levinson's seat is term limited. And since I live in Fruta, that's the one I have to run for, even though it's kind of in that large position, because everyone votes. So I just said, "All right, well, I guess now's that time." I decided to do that last December, started doing some research. Since I'm a federal contractor, my job actually had to have lawyers and solicitors for a couple of months, like vet that I was allowed to do that, that I wasn't breaking any laws. And then when I finally got the all-clear in May, I filed to run and have been doing that. And then since then, two other folks in our district have also decided to run. So it's been really interesting. It's my first campaign, but I think it's really important.
Nice, nice. You stated your three top priorities are communication, freedom, and transparency. How do the current board members, how do you see the current board members in terms of those three priorities that you have? Do you see that they're not transparent? Or how do you rate them? Let's give them a scale of one to 10. And you tell us, how do they rate them?
I, it's evolved. So I came up with those over the winter time, when I was like, "Okay, well, most people who run have three points. Like, it's just a thing you see." So I was like, "I guess I have to have that." So I would watch and all the board meetings or some from even previous boards and just kind of get a flavor for what critiques I would have. And they have improved, but still. So I guess it's hard to rank them, because like, I think they were worse in December and then got better and then terrible, like a little worse around the East Middle School closure and then a little bit better. Currently, though, I'd honestly just still give it a five to six, which is an F in math teachers' needs. But I wouldn't say there's no transparency or no communication. I just see massive room for improvement for things that are really simple to do. Like having videos, right? Like, I spoke to one of the current board members. And I was like, "Why don't you guys have press releases? Like, the day or a couple of days after a meeting, like, just get ahead of the news. Just be the ones to put that information first." And it's like, "Oh, well, that's, you know, there's kind of a lot of stuff that we talk about for four hours. People should just watch these meetings." And I was like, "I agree with you. I take the time to watch those meetings, but people are just so busy." You can't, that just seems like not a desire to communicate and to be transparent. Also, the paper, the folks there, I mean, any paper that you read has like one fact that's wrong. And they have an unwielding amount of things that they have to do. So they're not going to be able to double-check all of the data, right?
Now, are you talking about the papers not can't check the data? Or is the school board can't check?
The paper, right? I mean, like, any paper that I read. When I lived in Steamboat, I would be on the Planning Commission there and I'd read the paper. And I was like, "That number's not even the right number," you know? But it's because they would have like 19 articles a week or something that they had to do. And so you're like, "Oh, okay, now that you start to understand their position and where they're coming from, it's like, well, we could just be helping them out by giving a press release and making sure that those figures are good." And the last couple of months, the district has done that. They've shared data with the paper directly and met with the editorial boards. I think they're improving. But there are only two communications staff, right? So if you're wanting to expand, like, tell people more about programs that there are in the district and talk about school of choice and really motivate those things, your staff can only do so much. So I have a critique in that, but I also am not currently on the board, so I can't know if putting together a press release would take away from the classroom or things like that. But we'll see if I get there. And, or even if I don't, I mean, I've been speaking with the school board members of like, "Hey, these are my critiques for you." As far as transparency goes, I mean, things like just putting surveys online. Like, I'm not a parent. And even folks who have been parents, but now their kids have graduated, they're not getting the surveys that go out to parents. When we say, "Hey, do you want to consolidate these schools? Do you want to change the Fruta grade construction restructuring?" And so they have these amazing surveys that go to people to get their input, but they're only going to parents. It would be so simple to put them on their website or on their Facebook page so that we could all access them. Like, I know they certainly don't have my email address because I'm not a parent. But it, that's such a simple move. That's definitely not going to take staff time away from the classroom. So I think there are just easy things that they could do to improve. As far as freedom goes, I put that one right in the center, not necessarily as a critique from the board and what I was watching. That's more communication and transparency, but just to let people know that, like, I believe in all of those things. And those things specifically to your academic freedom, just being a teacher. For if someone wanted to tell me how to teach a specific topic and it had to be the specific way, I would be like, "That's, it doesn't flow with my style or who I am or how I relate to my students." And so I really love that one. And the district, I think, does a great job. They have a great policy for academic freedom for teachers. And then parental freedom is huge. Even though I'm not a parent, like, I've had them. I've had parents who have taken me out of a certain lecture or lesson or guest speaker or field trip. And that's their right to do that. And the current policy, as I read it, also has that freedom.
There's a difference, though. And one of the things that one of your running opponents says is, like, she talked about your knapsack being a hot mess, and it is true. I can tell you with my grandkids, there is just a pile of papers, and you have to opt out. And she suggested, "Why don't you say, 'Opt in'?" At the beginning of the year, we're sending out these surveys and we're planning these field trips and we're planning these curriculum. Just opt into the ones you want. Then you print off a list of, "These kids are the ones that opted in at the beginning of the year when they registered," which everybody has to do, and opt in instead of opting out. Because then you don't, I can't tell you how many things go by. And because that's your focus right now, you know, like you said, parents are really busy. And their kids are really busy. And they, what homework do you have? Homework? Automobile? I don't know.
Yeah, I did see that interview that I think was in this very room. And then I've also talked to one of the existing school board directors about that. I don't have a great answer, other than I'm hesitant because the state has it as some opt-out programs. So unfortunately, even like, if we all got on board and we said, "Hey, we really want to do that," the state has all these mandates that they put on us that we have to follow. So it would, there would definitely be some careful footwork of, "We might have to still have some opt-out programs because of state law, but then these could be opt-in." I'm open to it, though. My hesitation, also though, like, just, you know, just change is always like, "Ah, do we have to?" Would be now, I, as a former teacher, would be really nervous that that was crushing my academic freedom. So if you say on registration day, "Here are these field trips that, like, opt in." But then later, some really cool thing comes up where someone's like, "Hey, I want to invite your students to come do this thing." And you're like, "That would be really great in my lesson." And that actually happened to me when I was teaching in Rangeley, because that's a tuition thing and a schedule thing, and students have to know, you know, what's expected of them on day one. If I didn't already have that in the school schedule, the master schedule, I was not allowed to just do a really cool field trip in the middle of the semester. And that was really unfortunate and hard to be around. So I think it would have to be a little different from how you're describing it of like, it can't just be registration day. But then you run into the same thing with a dirty knapsack. So now the opt-in paperwork is maybe not getting to the parents.
They said that when you signed up, it would just be part of the registration thing that you, as a parent, have to do. But the other problem, a couple of things that I'm hearing, is just also having been a former teacher, oftentimes the reason that you can't just do the cool field trip in the middle is because you're, you have to provide for transportation. So that's a budgetary thing, and you have to know so far in advance. And also, when you're talking about academic freedom with state standards, there's quite a bit that says that you have to reach these standards and your lesson plans have to show how you're going to reach these standards. So some of the academic freedom is squashed right there. You know, I can't spend days, like I would like to, doing this because I know some of ours, we took really cool field trips and it was not nearly as cumbersome as it is now. But, you know, like, I taught psychology for one of my classes and we went to the state mental institution. So they got to see firsthand what it looked like. But you couldn't do that now. I mean, there's so much liability. What if somebody comes out and gets them? I don't know. I don't think they'll let them do that, but okay.
Sure, I guess what I would think, like, I did have a couple of field trips that I'd have my students go on or want to do. But I also really just like wanted to be outside for as much as we could do. So I don't think it always has to be something that costs money, right? I can just do a boring math lecture and say, "This is how we're going to talk about inverse functions, which is the undoing of a function." So I would always say, "Hey, hike, you know, you're going to turn left and then you're going to turn right. So come home, you want to do the opposite. So you want to turn left and then turn right." And so I just take them literally outside and with chalk, and we would go left and right, and we'd be inverse functions. So there is academic freedom, even though you have to teach inverse functions on this particular page and meet these things. That doesn't get to this parental business.
And you don't think that we have that right now?
No, I think we do. I just worry that we want to look at all of those things. Because I think sometimes academic freedom and parental freedom conflict on the surface. So my nervousness of, "Hey, let's have all of these opt-in things." Well, if it's how I feel I should teach this particular curriculum and you're opting it in, now that's such additional work to come up with alternatives if that paper in the knapsack gets lost. So I'm not saying no. I'm just like, that's really a different model that we'd have to look at and see all of the unintended consequences. Or just better ways to opt out, if that's the problem. But I think it's definitely within the community and the district's mind of, "Can we do something different? Is it just because the state said this and we don't?" And we do actually have a lot of way to look at it. And that would definitely be a charge I think the board is already going to take, but that I would, I would want to look into if I were elected. Even if I'm not elected, I want to be on as many committees as possible so I can nudge it from that direction as well.
Yeah.
Well, you're, one of your concerns was that you felt like that board meetings were not specifically for parents to come and speak their issues. How would you suggest that parents get to the board members so they can voice their opinions? Right now, it's really difficult to do anything other than at the board meetings.
That's a good question, and it gives me an opportunity, that's good feedback, to kind of correct something. I think the board meetings are a great time for parents to spend those three minutes. And to say to them, "Hey, I don't like how this is going and that other way is going." I think you might be referring to part of the Stand for the Constitution forum, where a woman was like, "Hey, these meetings are just, you know, positivity and we're failing our students in this way and that way and this way, and parents are upset and we don't talk about them in the meeting." Those comments are still needed, and they should be at the meeting. And I don't intend, I have no intention to discourage that. But what I believe that person was looking for was some acknowledgement in the meeting or some empathy in the meeting of, "Hey, we know we have these really awesome things we're talking about, and I acknowledge the things you're talking about." There's, there's not, to my knowledge, a mechanism in that parliamentary existence of a board meeting to respond to that parent. I mean, public comment, or whoever it is, you know, it's three minutes. "Thank you so much for speaking," and it's the next person. And so you just take notes and you do the best you can on that. But there's not a mechanism for dialogue. So that's really what I was meaning of, you know, parents, there should be another place or thing for what I believe that commenter wanted. And so district coffee or just emailing them? I mean, these people who are on the board are, they're so like passionate just about education and people and the community. You wouldn't take a volunteer position that takes a good 20 hours of your week if you didn't want to speak to the public and meet to the public. At least that's my belief.
Right.
So board coffee, excellent way to talk to them because then the board member can talk back with you. When you give a comment, you know, some of those comments are really emotional. They're about how a kid got bullied, and they're just, they break your heart. But at that meeting, you can't, as a board member, stop everything and have any sort of dialogue.
But the one thing you do have at the board meeting is that it is actually being recorded so that it can be gone back and looked at. And if it needs to be picked up again, the people could, the board members can contact that person and say, "Let's talk." You know, that kind of thing. I think there is a place for that as well. Because I, as, I'm a great-grandparent now, but when I was a parent in the 80s, they absolutely, they being the school district and the school board, would not allow us to speak. It was a total different thing. I mean, if you got up to speak, it was like, "No, you can't." It was just different then. And I am 100% for at least getting something as a record so you can go back and say, "Look, I brought this to you guys. We need some answers here." And they go back and check and make sure that that's exactly what I said and how to go about it. I agree with you on the coffees, a must, a must on the coffees, because I've attended some of those in the last couple of years that have been outstanding, outstanding. We got more solved over three hours of coffee than we would have doing three hours of board meetings, so.
That's, I, I did not live in a world where there was no public comment at a school board meeting. So, no, I didn't, yeah, I didn't even recognize that that was a thing and that people may be afraid, like, could go away. No, I think those moments are amazing. It's just, you don't get to have the feedback where it's like a coffee or a one-on-one or something else.
So I just want to interrupt. Why do you think people don't feel that the coffee is going to solve the problem? Why do you think they feel they need to go to the school board? Because we're seeing, just nationwide, not necessarily just with School District 51, but parents are going more and more to the school board meetings and speaking out. Why do you think that they're doing that where they didn't before?
That's a good question, and as like,
And how do we avoid having so much of that?
As like a scientist, I'm like, "I don't know. I don't know if I have data to back that claim," you know? Because I hadn't really thought about that. So you caught me with a good one. I would guess, coffee's like Saturday morning. You probably have something else going on, honestly.
Something to do with schools, usually soccer.
Yes, I didn't want to exactly say soccer, but yeah, so exactly that. Like, my best friend bought an SUV yesterday, and she's like, "I look like a soccer mom." I was like, "You literally are, actually." But,
Embrace it.
Yeah, but maybe it's what you're getting to of just having it on record. I know as a commissioner, I will ask a ton of questions that I know the answer to, specifically because I want the public to hear the response, what the policy is, and just to have that on the record. So I would, I would guess a lot of parents or folks are just coming for that reason. But also maybe just didn't know those meetings happened. I mean, I know a lot of people, they're like, "Oh, wait, the city has these meetings or the school board has those." And, yeah, you can speak at them. So I do wonder if our COVID experience of just kind of being online, people started to recognize that, like, "Oh, these happen and we could go to them." I mean, during that time, I was watching more television than I ever have. And you start to realize, like, you know, the news was capturing like all of these kinds of comments that were a little bit more sensational. But I think it let folks know, like, that that occurred, whether they knew it maybe or not. That's my best guess. I haven't asked the community, though, if they don't like coffee and they prefer this. I'm not quite sure.
Okay. And it was like, they, they don't, yeah, I think that they don't feel like it's as, I think it's Ruth, they want to know that it was heard and that it wasn't just, "Oh, yes, you're so cute." And goodbye, they want to know that in a formal setting and that it's acknowledged and they see it, you know, as a problem that they want the school board to address. I, I think that's why most people do that for them. And they want to have the people that are in charge right then say, "What are you going to do about it?"
Well, I think that's the part that I struggle with because you can't respond back and say, "This is what I'm going to do about it." But it is, I mean, the board, if the policy for this specific school board is really a fun one, and I don't know if you've read it recently, but it's basically just says, "You are to interpret what the community wants." And I'm like, "That's a bold thing to ask of a school board member." So, which I think is great. It's why we're elected people, those kinds of things. But it's like, "Oh, interpret," right? I'm not a psychologist or a mathematician.
I find psychology a part of your undergraduate career. I read about you too.
You know, so for folks to use, to use their voice at that time, I think is great. I would hope, though, that if I were elected, folks would say, you know, "Jess has this compassion, she has this empathy. She reads her emails probably more often than she should, and she'll respond and she'll get back and maybe build in a little bit more trust where folks don't have to, you know, order pizza on a Tuesday night so that they can come to 5:00 to this meeting and spend hours there just to get, to feel heard." I encourage them to do that, but there are other ways that are less intrusive on that person's own schedule, I think. Like, I mean, I spent years in service industry. This is the first time in my life I've not been a server. And it was because I knew I wanted to campaign and I couldn't have another job. So when I see city meetings or municipal court in Fruta is at nighttime, I'm like, "Well, how are you supposed to do that if you're in service industry and things?" So I think you, you want to have that available for folks that want it or it just works better for their schedule. But you really, my goal would just be to prove to folks, like, "Hey, you see me in the grocery store, I hear you. It's not just a, 'Oh, okay, go away.'" Like, it's, "I'm going to go home with that and I'm going to talk to my best and closest friends about it, and I'm probably not going to sleep, depending on what the story was because I'm so involved." And I would hope that if I were elected, that folks would have the confidence in the, in the board as a whole even, that like, yes, we all are passionate and want to hear.
And want the best for kids.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I see from your biography that you believe education is a means of achieving, like, a way out and a way up and independence and security and those type of things. How do you define student success in elementary, middle, and high school? I'm going to start with that, it's a two-part question.
Okay. That's a great question. Because I think success is a lot of things. I'll start, I guess, with a little anecdote. When I was teaching, I had gold stars, like 5,000 of them from Amazon. And if, let's say you got a 93, which is an amazing score, but you got an 87, but like, for you, that was the greatest you've ever done, you'd get a gold star. 93, you've done better, right? And so I would just kind of subjectively, just kind of throw out these stars. And for a couple of reasons. One, to just be like, "This is the greatest work you've done." But then also to like, "Oh, why'd you get a star?" You know, and just kind of, kids love stickers, even when they're in college.
They do.
But it also,
Adults love stickers.
Yeah, exactly. So, so what I, why I bring up that anecdote is that success is just so different from student to student.[1628.37] And what's unfortunate about the board is you're just so high level. It's often data. You know, did we um earn these points for accreditation? Where are we in, you know, our MIS and. And and all these other metrics. So as a board member. I think the success just comes from how are the principals reporting out? How is the senior leadership, you know, reporting out? Um, what are they feeling is success in their schools, whether it's elementary, middle school or high school? Um, as a teacher, I just think it's, are they passing? Are they learning the things? Are they doing their absolute best? If it's a C, that might be their absolute best and a total win. Um, I I just think they're different answers from the different perspective. Um, and. So I don't like my cold answer of districts are just data and these metrics and these things, cause, cause I think it it. Unfortunately, like removes that compassion and that excitement um that the teachers or principals are able to maybe define success as. Um, as far as high school goes, um, I think it's a little bit different, right? It's like, did you graduate? That's success. Um, that's a kinda easy one, but then. What would be cool, and I know they're starting to do with their strategic plan, is like some postgraduate information, like. You know, did they go out in the workforce? Did they join the military? Did they join a community college or university? Um, and try to get that feedback to say like, are we actually setting people up for these pathways post graduation? Um, and I think that'll be really critical because that's not just high school, really. I mean, that's like our entire K twelve experience as a district. Um, if postgraduate, they were able to be successful in their choices. Um, but those data are hard to get. So it'll be interesting to see what the district is able to to glean and and how they're able to to capture that information. Uh, but you said this was a two parter.
Yes, yes, yes. So how do students' life choices and circumstances affect success in school? And how can the board impact that? Because some of the things that you talked about in your biography were a lot of, and so I feel like this connects into you personally. A lot of the kids were doing drugs and their parents, you know, maybe weren't aware or. You didn't feel were involved, but a lot of times the student choices make a difference in the outcomes that have. Little to do with what the school board is doing. So how do you as a board impact those student choices? And their their circumstances that, you know, like you had some bad circumstances in the main way and. So the school board is kind of up on this higher plane with statistics. But you're down here going, I want these students to achieve, which is the goal of a school. Is just make sure these people can function outside and that they're well adjusted and productive and happy, I mean.
That's a, that's a really amazing question. I'm excited for this one. Um, so, so yeah, very recently in my website, I I. Posted a a pretty personal story, um, but I grew up with a lot of drugs in my household, a lot of fighting, um, just things that. I felt were not healthy, but what I would like to point out, I had no idea how to fix it. Right? I'm an eleven year old or a fourteen year old and, um, and I know in this this valley. We have a lot of students in the exact same or worse situations. Um, and while a board can't one on one go to a student, like, I think you have a bad home, right? Like, like. Cause they're so high level. What they can do is reinvigorate the superintendent or the leadership team to say, hey. Your administrative task is to really, really push these programs and let students know there's counselors. And then our job as a board is to look at every line in this budget. You know, do we have to pay a hundred and eighty thousand for workman's comp every cycle, or can we pay a hundred and forty thousand dollars for that same benefit? And now have a half FTE to have another counselor in this school, right? So it's the board to say. Can I find money to give you the resource you need to help push these administrative actions of letting kids know that there are counselors? Um, I look back on it, you're like, how did I not know I had counselors that I could talk to or? Teachers that I could speak with, but I I just didn't know. So I think a board can can push those things through just giving direction and say, hey, superintendent. I really want you to focus on, um, you know, letting folks know there's counselors, resource officers, um, all sorts of. Tools that we have that are fully funded, um, and you know, find that space within your schools to to push that forward. Um, and then find the money for when they come back and they say, well, we're trying to tell students this, but there's a line for the counselor. So we need more counselors. And then it's our job as a board to to come back and say. Alright, I'm gonna find you the money, or I'm gonna find a grant writer to find you the money or or something like that. So I think. The goal that D fifty one has for students' sense of belonging kind of has all of that in it, but it. It isn't as explicit as I would like to see with my own experience and just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go a little deeper on that. What does that mean to be more explicit and how do you get that?
Um, well, but the strategic plan is a high level plan. So. When it says students should have more sense of belonging and and here's our metrics to get there, you know, it doesn't say. Every classroom is going to have a sign in it that says, how's it going? Have you talked to your counselor? Those are principal level, teacher level kinds of decisions, but I think the board could move forward to say. Hey, let's tease out what this is and let's actually create guidance for what that specific one is. Um, because the strategic plan, it's it's just so up here and the things I'm talking about are a little bit more. Um, f- fine, but a board does have the power to say. I I want you to tease that part out. I want that to make more sense. The community is telling me. We know our kids have mental health struggles. You know that, we all know it, but let's find out what resources you need to make that real. Um, and I think that's something that they have the power to do.
Along those lines, excuse me, timeout. Have a drink.
Oh, I've been sipping away. Sipping and sweating. You have to sweat back here because you can't open the doors. You get too much sound.
Along those lines, Jessica, uh, I you had made a statement somewhere along the line and I'm not sure exactly where it was, so correct me if I'm wrong. But you had said something about the fact that you would like to see more administration.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah.
Administration. We have spent years trying to cut back the fat. And try to get leaned up so that we don't spend so much money on administration, but more to the teachers. And to the students. So, why do you think we need more?
Um, good, 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 good one. Um, so if you look at just districts this size, they normally have. Not just one assistant superintendent, but like two or three. We have zero. Um, so. I I I have heard from the community, they've been trying to trim the fat, so to speak, but I think. There, just that phrase in and of itself, trim the fat, is is putting a bias on administration. Sometimes they do really amazing things, like communication staff, right? People who get out, make posters, are. Pushing like, hey, we have this amazing program and we want your students to choose D fifty one because of this program. Or getting out to have the R five have more internships with businesses. That job that promotes the district is administration, but it also works to solving a lot of the issues that we have. So administration isn't just someone pulling a paycheck to push paper and say, yeah, we've looked at the data and we've reported out to the state. Um, they can have incredible impacts in the classroom. Um, and when I look at just what I know of how boards, districts and and org charts kind of function. It's just really surprising to me how few folks there are. Um, Barbara Evanson was describing that there's one person. That manages all of these really critical reports and investigations for. Um, meanness, uh, pure conflict, I'm sorry, she corrected. It's pure conflict versus bullying versus whatever other, you know, kind of. Not so positive things are in the school, like one person, like that's, that's not fat that needs to be trimmed, like that person needs a helper. Um, but that's in central administrative services, so.
I find that very interesting because so many people think administration as those who sit like fat cats at a desk. Pushing papers, doing things on the computer and not actually contacting anybody. So is there a better word that can be used rather than administration? Would that be more serving than? Saying administration?
Um, probably, you know, because I think when, I mean, when the board is doing anything. They should have the buy in of the public, the constituents. So if the public see this word and it's a bad word and then we all start conflict about. Well, I want you to do this and you're doing that and well, it's like, well, actually, at the end of the day, we're we're all talking the same thing. We're just using the wrong language. Then then yes, maybe there's space to change the word, um, or just informs folks and say. Yeah, administration sometimes means this and it's, you you know, the the things that some consider to be fat. Um, and then other times it's like actually in the school and really pushing forward, um, some of the things that. When I look at the administration org chart, I'm like, man, that's really asking a lot of that person. Because, cause then you're, like, especially if there's just one of someone, I'm so afraid of burnout just as an employer. Here's like, I can't lose that person and you should never really ha- run an organization where if one person leaves, it falls apart. So if you're. Setting up in in that kinda way, um, that's really nerve wracking. And not like that one person is doing that, I have no idea, but um. That that just gives me a lot of pause for concern, um. If we're gonna burn people out by not, by asking them to do more, you know, and then cutting uh positions or assistants.
I think I understand your point. There's just that, uh, as a layperson and I am totally layperson, uh, parent, grandparent, great grandparent. To me, administration is bad, you know, it's just, it's just ingrained in in us people that are over sixty. That too much administration makes everything top heavy. You pay all your money to administration and nothing to the people who really need. The extra help.
Sure, and I would say senior leadership team, you know, they pull in a good paycheck, but. I really administration, um, district fifty one calls them more central services, central admin, maybe that helps. Um, and that can really be like, um, let's, let's bring it back to the classroom even, like instructor coaches. That's a teacher, that's an FTE, and that's a person that goes from school to school. Um, so they're not explicitly in one classroom, but they're this amazing service that's that's centralized to the district. So a lot of the folks in central admin are that, like the school can't have one dedicated of that. Um, position, but those folks are assisting all of the schools or a handful of those schools and doing services. For multiple schools that are really critical. We just can't have one for every school and right, so, um. Centralized personnel.
Actually, that does sound better. Strangely enough, you know, it it does sound better. And if you can, that way you can explain out the fact that you're not just feeding these people for no reason at all. They're actually doing a service for the families, for the kids, for the teachers, for the principals, for everybody. They're actually doing a service. Rather than just collecting a paycheck.
Or maybe on some of the stuff, make what forms they have simpler and.
Yes.
Instead of saying, well, we have to have this, this, this and this, says who? Why, why don't we do it different ways so that it's more streamlined and, you know.
It's reminding me of a thing I do sometimes in my own work, where if someone is like, hey, fill out this form, but it has been like a photocopy of a photocopy that it's so tilted. And you have to print it and write on it and like, I don't have a printer, so I have this habit of redoing that form for that person. In like a five oh eight compliant PDF fillable form and sending him back. And it's, it's not necessarily to just be like, oh, I'm so, like, why aren't you doing this? It's just. It's honestly easier for me than filling out this really terrible one and then I know it it will be better in the long run. Uh. Of course, it takes a certain relationship with a person, like I would, like I just met you, I would be like, I'm fixing your form.
That would be fine.
But, uh, but the story, the thinking about that, like. Folks, like secretaries and people who file these forms or create these forms or send them out, I mean, they're so inundated with the. The coordination of, you know, herding cats, but they they know their form is terrible and they wanna fix it, but they don't have time. Um, and and I find that a lot.
The power.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, a lot of times you give it. A lot of grace and I appreciate that about you, but sometimes it's just, you know, that's the way we've always done it and that's why we will continue to do it and.
And oh, huh.
Because I I don't wanna look at that. I I agree with you. It doesn't need to be done. Um, I'm gonna go back to another thing. You said your position, the position on the board should not be political. What political biases do you see on the current board and the other candidates running for election?
Great question. I don't. I don't know if I necessarily see politics on the current board. Um, I do know the community thinks there are politics with the current board. Um, I do know, um, my boyfriend's family is longtime uh Mace County residents. And I was like, oh, man, I just love how President Heights runs these meetings and he's like, you like her? And I was like, heck, yes, I like her. Her parliamentary skills are amazing. And they're like, oh, well, and you know, her politics don't seem to align with yours. And I was like, that doesn't matter. Um, and like, I would have never known we were different politically from just watching board meetings or even meeting with her when we had um. A meeting together. And so, and perhaps I'm just naive and I don't see it because other people seem to claim that. You know, we've got these board members here that are this political agenda. We got these board members here that are that, um. I really don't see that when I look at what the board is currently doing.
That is so refreshing to hear because we don't really have a political board. As far as I can see, anyway, I think that they're quite neutral.
What's been really disheartening through the campaign trail is just. Just I'm out there either knocking on doors or going to businesses or I'm in uh certain forums and spaces where. I'm hearing, oh, well, there's those two and those three and this one and this thing. I'm like, I don't see that. Um, you know, we've got some peoples, and I know there's candidacy right now and you wanna select your favorite candidate and you have reasons and. I haven't seen any candidate be political. I wanna make that clear. Um, you know, I, people have asked me how, where I fall in the spectrum. People have asked other candidates where they fall in the spectrum. I haven't seen any candidate be political, so I don't mean to say like, oh, I'm not this and they are. But the community is putting so much on these candidates. And saying, oh, there's the the liberal group and you've got the conservative group and you've got this crazy progressive lady and. Like, and I just, I wish it would stop. I don't think it will. Um. I think those voices are just louder, the ones that are saying that, and I and I hope that they're a minority.
What will you do to try to help that situation if you get in? Because that's gonna be critical to your.
Right, sure. Um, well, one thing I've done for my own self, which has also helped. Or in some cases hindered my campaign is I switched from a Democrat to unaffiliated in my own voter registration. Um, that was a little bit of a personal crisis of some folks were putting on me some things that didn't. Match with my identity. They're like, oh, well, Democrats feel this. And I was like, not this one. Um, and. And and I was just getting that kinda from a a lot of sides and I said, okay, I can't do this. I'm gonna wait till after the election and be unaffiliated. Because that doesn't mean what it means. And then I was like, well, I'm just gonna do it in the middle of a campaign and and the spin is. I hope people just see how truly nonpartisan I think this office is. If I'm. You know, saying no to this kinda help in a campaign, because, oh, like as an unaffiliated, I can't get anyone to help me. Right? Like the Republican office is like, oh, we only have, you know, can only give you these tools if you're a registered Republican. The Democrats are like, oh, I can't share any of my stuff with you. If you're not a Democrat, this is so hard to run. Um, but it's, it was so important to me to just say. My values are kinda in such a centralized mix that I can't be one of those. So campaign, doing that. And then as as far as it goes with, um, you know, moving forward if I're on the board. I think just staying out of it or addressing it. Like if someone says, I think you're being political, like just, let's just address that and say that it isn't. Um, be, and I perhaps it's just my belief system, cause I, like you said, I give a lot of people more grace. Maybe, um, but I just don't. It's, it just isn't there to me and it shouldn't be there. And when the public decides that one candidate has this. Cer- this agenda, I'm like, well, have you seen that from that candidate? Um, I've certainly seen it from members of the community that are pushing one candidate over another. Um, I mean, I've had. Some people say, well, if this person doesn't get elected, we're gonna lose our healthcare centers. And I was like, well, I'm never gonna vote those down. I think they're great. Or this other person is just like, if this person doesn't get elected, then parents aren't gonna be able to speak at meetings anymore. And I'm like, absolutely not. I would never have crossed my mind to do that. Um, and I I think that's really a shame, so I hope more people go to forums and hear candidates than. Than what other people are are pushing for that.
Really help if we could get all five of you in the same place at the same time, because these are the kinda questions like Lisa and I are asking you. That need to be asked to all five of you.
Yeah, and I so appreciate that we could do this, but I I will, in the defense of myself and all candidates, the quantity of information we get asked right now. In my email of like questionnaires or show up to this or show up to this, but only at nine fifteen on Wednesday morning. You know, we can't come to all the things, so I, um.
But at least one.
Yeah, yeah, um, and the one that was scheduled for last night but did get canceled, that was the only one that reached out like. Eight weeks ago to schedule. So it was a real shame, cause like that group was really, really like respecting that. Some of us have jobs or several boards or parents and, um. And so I was like, ah, this was like the one I've had on my calendar for so long.
Well, and I think sometimes it's just, cause yours has been communication and sometimes I think people just. Don't know where to get the commi- where to get the information, because of, um, they, we just don't go, all go to the same sources.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
I complain about this to every single person. I mean, we talk city council and I go, nobody wants to go through all of the different. Beautiful apps that you have and all of this to find something that, you know, happened six months ago.
That's, it's just an excellent point of like, you know, even right now, if you wanna go. Cause I rewatch board meetings all the time for school board to make sure like I got caught up and I'm like. Okay, was that the first week in June or the third week in June, right? Cause they're all just by date, um. And of course, that would be a tremendous amount of data management to put search of, you know, what kinds of things were on the agenda, but. But that would help so much. I mean, it's just this like, find this one intern that's doing it in college, give him a stipend for a couple hundred bucks. And it would be amazing. Um, you know, we could do stuff like that and, um, as far as like campaigning goes, that's why. I've been reaching out to as many people as possibly can. Um, I downloaded begrudgingly TikTok today to start making TikToks. Cause I know there's a lot of community members that use that and, um, you know, I've been trying to meet with the paper and just as many people because. I think during the campaign more than any other time is when a candidate should just go to as many places. And online or paper otherwise to meet the community. If I'm not gonna go to everything that I can possibly in my schedule at least. Um, how am I gonna be a good board member later when my job is to interpret the ear of the community? So, um. I do know there are some candidates that have chosen to not go to certain forums or respond to questionnaires because they don't like that group. I've heard that firsthand or they don't uh like these. I've heard that firsthand, or they don't uh like these questions, um and I just think that's really unfortunate, it doesn't. To me, I'm gonna talk to anyone, I'm gonna answer any questions they have, because my job isn't to push. That I want this certain thing in a board, um and I want this policy to move forward, my job would be to interpret. And if I don't go or you go, I can't interpret who you are and what you want. So it's been. Thank you.
And a lot of work.
Yeah, when I was, you have to um get people to sign a petition to get on the ballot. And I think you only need like fifty signatures. But you should get more in case people aren't registered to vote, which happened to be a lot, or something like that. And I, instead of using my friends and family, I was like, I'm just gonna go talk to strangers. And just go to places I've never even been before, like, you know, some Palisade Brewery, which ended up not being a good idea. Because those people were drunk and didn't sign their s- their names right. You know, and then some like Orchard Mesa, you know, grocery store, just a lot of places that I don't go, cause I was like, I have to start meeting the people. At some point, like, let's just start with this petition, um and that's kind of just been how I I feel the campaign and then if elected. You should be behaving.
I I've got one that's gonna be a little political. Okay, so, you know, curriculum is a big deal, what kids are taught. Do you think that um curriculum should teach morals and values? And if so, whose morals and values, because there's always the um criticism that. Maybe they're teaching CRT or nope, those people, they're way too focused on a faith based curriculum. Or we we can't have any of that, what do you think? What kind of curriculum should you have and and how do you know you have that?
That's a good one, um and what's interesting is, uh I didn't immediately think that was a political question. So when I think of morals, I'm like, oh, yeah, like in the seventh grade, when you read fables. Fables always have a moral and they have those like little animal characters that are doing things and you learn lessons from that. So that's completely appropriate to me, and also, like, later, if you weren't taught a certain fable, you'd be like, oh, I don't know who Rick etiketabey is, and you're just like. What, how do you not know that, every kid learns that thing, um so I think there is a place for certain. Basic human morality, integrity, kinds of. Things.
What, what would those be?
But but that's when I realized that, oh, okay, now we are getting into where this might be a little bit more political of of. Where are those lines? And I think, this is a good question. Our goal at D fifty one in the strategic plan. I wish I could find the words perfectly right now. But is to equip and empower students to be in a diverse, a culturally diverse world. So we have a world that is filled with very religious people and just not or different religions. We have a world where folks believe. Just all sorts of different things that are a lot more personal, um and should. Be to either taken with care in a curriculum or just excluded and waited for college or something like that. But I think some level of exposure to, there are lots of ideas and ways to live is helpful. I mean, if we were doing strictly math, reading, writing, and that's all we were teaching. And all of a sudden, you're eighteen and you get your first job and you have all these people that know things that you don't know, or they come from other places. That's not setting up for student success. We live in a really, really diverse and unfortunately sometimes divided place, and. I think the students should be able to. To pick up on some of those different cultures in their school. Now, as far as like religion, that absolutely can't be public funds, you know, if you're looking for. Just math, reading, writing and faith studies, then that's what private school is for. But if you're looking for like, um uh after school clubs, like I think it's amazing to have religious after school clubs. But those are different from curriculum, which I think is your question.
How the curriculum is. Done too, it does, it doesn't mean, like, for instance, I I did teach, I taught college level and high school level. And depending on, and particularly in history, depending on what the bent is, what gets included and what gets excluded and how it's taught. And to a large extent, you know, now the C E A says their board president says. Well, we should move to socialism, communism in our teaching and not take on the fact that, and and curriculum is important. What you teach somebody is how they see the world too. And sometimes it gets to be unbalanced or excluded, you're, you're including some things and you're saying. No, I'm not gonna teach you this, and one of the things Barb said is, you know, if you're gonna teach in science, you're gonna teach. Um evolution, you should also teach creation, because you've got both. And neither one of them are, you're, you're gonna say, the people that believe in creation, believe in creation. And they believe that they can scientifically take you along those lines of intelligent design. Those that believe in evolution, but to exclude one side, to the favor of the other. Because you're, you're saying that promotes a value that we don't support. Becomes really difficult for, I think, a lot of parents. And so I think, I think that's why some schools say, you know, like the new ascent, say, we're gonna teach classical education. And that a a parent says, yeah, that's what I want you, that's your job to teach this. Our job is to teach the values and morals we want our children to have, we don't want the school to be.
Um so I'm glad you brought up ascent and just other choices, right, so private school is not the only choice, um I. As much as I want every parent to choose D fifty one and keep all of those monies in D fifty one. That's just not what every parent wants, so I do like that there are different places for them to go. I don't wanna solicit any charters by any means, um to take that business, if you will, away, but. But when it comes down to curriculum, I, I think our existing framework isn't broken. So existing framework, you have, you know, Department of Education federally, they come down, they say, hey, these these broad metrics, you know, whether that's. No child left behind or whatever thing, whatever current administration's calling it, here's the things, and then each state says, okay, we have got state rights and we wanna. Tweak this and do this in this way, and then that comes down, and then the local districts can say, hey, well, we also have our own rights, and so we can tweak these kinds of things in this. Different way, so the the most recent curriculum, I think that was passed in D fifty one, was the fifth grade reading. Some reading curriculum, excuse me if I get the grade wrong, um but there's a committee that is of D fifty one folks, uh some members of the community. They review it, they look at it, and then they put it all together, and this is really how all work with the board works. Some committee exists of all the smartest people, they come up with recommendations, present it to the board, and then they vote on that resolution. Or they ask a ton of questions and say, hey, the community's been saying this, what's your response? Is your response, oh, it's already built into there, or, oh, yeah, actually, we're gonna have to go back to the drawing board, that's really what I see a board is doing, so you've. You've got all of these people and they created this great curriculum, and it passed five oh with the board, so. I think the current model is fine, but the questions that you're asking are like, oh, when we get to social studies, let's talk about that. Yes, to be quite honest, I didn't even know what C E A meant until this morning when I Googled it, so I, I don't actually know what the Colorado Education Association. Um has said and and maybe seen as pushing, um you know, but they aren't those legislative bodies that set curriculum. They're just that really has a lot of money force to to be influencing and lobbying. And I think. I I I don't know what they're pushing with socialism and communism, um those are topics that should be taught. But along with capitalism and all the other ways that countries govern.
So I guess where I'm seeing that, just head and ah huh, maybe where parents, you know, and I'm always looking at what. How does, how does the community, because you serve the community, how does the community see it, and maybe in things like curriculum or. Policy and procedures where parents need to be invited is when they're in the committee stage. And going to visit committees and say, okay, um what, what are you guys developing and what is your criteria in having them come there? Instead of when it's a finished product and people say. I feel like you're imposing that on me, and you said the smartest people developed it, but where.
You brought this up, so um early on in the campaign, or even maybe before I officially launched, um I was meeting with Dr. Hill and I was like. All right, so I'm gonna do this, and I know that I would, if elected, have, you know, Tuesday nights, this, but I also have some number of committees, like. What is my time commitment, what, what are you expecting of me, cause I don't wanna tell my job one thing and then get in over my head. And he was like, well, it's great you've asked, because we don't have a list of committees. That all the board members, like, there's no master list, and then a couple months later, or. Excuse me if I get the timeline wrong, but at some other point, he was like, well, we're culling the list. We've been looking at it as a board and we're saying, hey, do we have to be in this committee, is there even a conflict of interest if we go to this one, and so they've been. Fixing that, and then um I think it was when I met with Director Lima. And I was like, you know, you know, what are you guys doing, it's like, you know, it's not like a binder, and she corrects me, and she goes, it actually is a binder. So the current board is putting together some sort of training material um for the folks who get elected. Which is great, um I wish I had it now, um because why I wanted to know what those committees were. Um I think, yeah, it must have been when I sat with Director Lima, um because I was speaking with her and she goes, you know, you're new to the community and. And, you know, I think what we need is just more people for when there's committees, so the impression I was getting in that meeting was. When they say, hey, we need to have the smartest people, they've just been selecting from like the list of known volunteers, and you get the same folks. Time after time, um so I had wanted to like kinda get that list and start to think about as I was meeting with people on the campaign trail of like. Would you wanna be more involved, there's this committee, and and I don't have that list yet, but it's kinda in the back of my mind of. When I see it and when I know more from this se- super secret binder of training materials, if that's allowed, because, cause that's really where it's at. You just, you nailed it of. Yeah, people are, they come to the night of first reading or or passing of a res- resolution or a vote of a resolution. Um and they haven't seen those many months of work. And they should or have the opportunity um to to go to that and to do that, depending on the committee, I mean, for declining enrollment committee. I think they did it perfectly with their facilitation, keeping those kinda closed, um and then reporting out, and then having a couple. Of reporting out meetings with the committee, cause that one's just really contentious, but something like curriculum, I think, should be a lot more open and and then. The other committees, I don't know what they are.
We have taken so much of your time, do you have any final questions, or do you have any questions that you have for us or wanna address?
Do you have any statements you'd like to make, better, better, yes?
Yeah, actually, I do have a statement, um that I, I, just as many places as I possibly can share this. Is I don't believe that I am running against any particular individual, um and I. I I have been told that that's me being naive, but I stand by that that's how our democracy functions is. The electorate is actually charged with the hardest thing, and that's to look, in District A, you have three people running. I think all of us are very deserving, I think we would do a good job, and it's the the community's job to figure that out, I don't. I'm just running for this board seat, I believe they're also running for these board seats, I hate when someone calls them my opponents or. Or something to that effect. And I think if you really look at what every candidate is saying, they want the same things. They want students to have success, they want them to have belonging, they want them to be safe and secure. Um and they wanna be communicative and they wanna use transparency. I think it's the public's job to say, well, what are they doing on their campaign, and are they gonna be the best fit for that? And I hope that I earn those votes and I am selected as that, you know, I'm being as communicative and transparent as I possibly can be. Um and then just myself, you know, I've got so many things going on, I can't possibly prep for. Oh, this one meeting, I'm gonna talk in this one way or something, I'm like, this is just me. Come watch me talk to people, um and and then if elected, this is how you're going to get me as as a director. And I just want people to talk to all of their friends and say, hey, you got, you know, it's crazy that Jess is running, you got these other people running. Like, let's just try to get people to inform themselves, and I know it's a busy, busy time.
There you go with the grease, get sorry.
Is, um, you know, but I just want folks to. To listen to their friends and family and and to listen to endorsements if that's helpful for them, um but to do their own research on each candidate.
Very good idea.
Well, you've been watching Mesa County Compass, this is the truth as we see it, you decide.